And Mr. Doughty, we are ready.
Good evening. Welcome to the District 225 Board of Education meeting. Ma'am Secretary, would you please read the role?
Mr. Doughty?
Here.
Mr. Glawacki?
Present.
Ms. Mullenberg?
Here.
Mr. O'Hara? Ms. Segwin?
Here.
Mr. Shine?
Present.
Dr. Steinberg?
Yeah.
Item two on our agenda is approval of agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Bye.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries six zero.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us and we apologize about the delay. We had a quick special meeting ahead of that. We are just finishing up first semester tomorrow, ready to start our second semester the following day. Very exciting time to transition as we move into the second half of the year. This evening, we have an excellent agenda. We have our typical opening with community comment. Then we have a special announcement regarding our new Glenbrook North principal. And we will take a vote on that. And then we'll have our typical board and superintendent reports, our consent agenda. And our five topics on our regular agenda, the dashboard, the school links. New system we're going to be using for college and career counseling, strategic planning, capital projects, and new phone systems. So we thank you all for being here this evening. And item three on our agenda is community comment. I do not see anyone on the list tonight. We always do welcome input from our community, whether it's at our meetings or by email or phones. We always learn that way and we are able to continue to do our very best to improve. Item four on our agenda is going to be our board and superintendent reports. Dr. Johns.
Thank you, Mr. Doughty. Our students are wrapping up their final exams. We appreciate the, the great work, the hard work that our staff did to accommodate the challenges that were set before them in regards to the weather and the need to change their final exam schedules. Also appreciate the work of our students to, to address finals and keep a strong mind as they move forward. So they can do their best job possible in their final exams and appreciate the parents have supported their kids through that time. As we're wrapping up our final exams, we're taking a bit of a pause on many of our extracurricular and co-curricular activities. But I'm sure both of our principals tonight will have an update. So I'll start off with Dr. Georges.
Good evening. It has been another exciting couple of weeks at Glenbrook South. Most importantly, I would like to start out with girls' palms has qualified for state. They had an absolutely incredible performance out at Lake Park High School. So we're very excited that they're going to compete this Friday and then they'll hopefully qualify for the finals on Saturday. So we're very, very proud of our ladies. Boys Swimming and Diving also had a fantastic weekend. They varsity team beat Evanston Friday by winning nine of the 11 races. And what was most awesome is a one, two, three sweep of the diving competition by Taylor Isaac, Charles Richards, and Kevin O'Connor. They came back then on Saturday and the team took home the Titan Relays first place award as well. And it is that time of year again, V show, V show, V show. So even with all of the rescheduling, we were able to finish all of our V show auditions and this year we are unstoppable. So it's going to be a fantastic performance. Please save the dates. That will take place February 21st to 24th. So it's going to be here before we know it. And tickets are on sale. Mr. Moranto wanted me to make sure I mentioned tickets are on sale already. And you know, we, we try to make sure that we share information about the four A's. And we do a lot of student travel in the Glenbrooks, which is one of the most amazing things that we offer our community. So I wanted to take a moment to showcase an example of what our students are doing when they go on all of these trips that you guys so kindly sign off on. Last Friday, several of our S E L C, these is our science and engineering learning community students. They traveled to Argonne Labs. And what's fascinating about Argonne is they open up actual laboratory environments and invite students in to do hands-on learning. And that's what you're seeing in this picture. They worked on an ongoing experiment at Argonne with scientists on carbon capture. The students get to use a scanning tunneling microscope to actually see carbon dioxide molecules being captured on different surfaces. And then they're able to analyze whether or not different surfaces capture the carbon better. And what's capturing more carbon dioxide from the air. So this is a powerful experience for our students because they get to actually see atoms. That's amazing. And pictured in this photograph is some of our GBS students and the scientist there is showing them how to create an ultra-high powered vacuum, which is a very necessary component to be able to keep that sample they're analyzing free and clear of anything that's in the air. So this is hands-on science in an actual national laboratory. And our students are able to see things that we could never replicate in the lab. So these are some of the powerful learning experience that are relevant, they're engaging and they're authentic learning experiences outside of the district when we send our students to travel. And I just wanted to share a little look into what they do when we take them off campus. And that's it for me.
Thanks Barb. First on our GBN update, you see our boys bowling team. I feel like I've brought them back so many times, but they're really the gift that keeps on giving. They are going to state competition this Thursday, really downstate in Old Fallon, Illinois. Next slide, we have our competitive dance team. In this photo, you see they've clearly made a transition from a performance group to a competitive team. And these are photos from this last past weekend at sectionals. Our cheer, another of our competitive groups is off to a great start with a second play, or actually ending with a second place finish at the CSL conference. And they will be competing in sectionals this weekend at Rolling Meadows, too. Our girls' basketball has had three monster wins on the road in the last couple of weeks, knocking off Nutria, Evanston, and Lane Tech. They have a very impressive 14 and five record with two tournament championships. Boys' basketball equally is impressive, had a couple of big wins against Nutria and Evanston. But this past Saturday, I think, was the biggest as they were down 10 at halftime and were able to defeat.
How was that missing from Dr. Georges' report? I don't understand.
They're currently 17 and four and seven and oh in conference. Girls' gymnastics and other of our sports teams are four and one in their meets and they've posted a high score of 142.95 this season. As a former gymnastics coach, I was impressed by that because when you get in the 140s, you've arrived. Their conference is Friday at Nutria and regionals following on Tuesday. On the activity front, our chess team took second place in conference to be beat by GBS, who was first. Our variety show is called Elevate. See, I gave you, I gave you a shout out. Our variety show is February 7th, 8th, and 9th, and it is called Elevate. So tickets are also now on sale. And lastly, this isn't on a slide, but GBN recently received word that they're the College Board's AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award, one of the award winners for that. For expanding young women's access to AP Computer Science. This award acknowledges schools for their work toward equal gender representation during the 22, 23 school year. So we're really proud of that. And that's it for us.
Thank you, Dr. Scott and Dr. Georges. It's always great to hear your updates. That's it for that item. Mr. Doughty.
All good to hear. Board members, anything on your report tonight?
I just can comment that a little one is enjoying her time on the gymnastics team as a varsity athlete on there and stuff. So yes, she thinks she's arrived, too.
Dr. Georges, which group was that that went to Argonne? Maybe I missed it.
So we have a group at Glenbrook South where students choose freshman year to sign up for a partnership between science classes and engineering classes. It's a small learning community. And it is part of that group, that science and engineering learning community that went down to Argonne. Those students partner their project lead the way engineering courses and their advanced science classes together with math over the course of their, of their four years. So it's, it's a subset of our population, but they're all budding STEM kiddos. So having these hands-on experiences at actual labs are really important to their future post-secondary goals in the STEM fields.
Excellent. Anything else, board members? Wonderful. Thank you for those reports. Always great to hear all that, all that news. Item five on our agenda is our first discussion action item. And it is an exciting one. It is the appointment of our Glenbrook North principal. Before I hand it to Dr. Johns, I just want to give really deep thanks to so many people involved with this. Ms. Romano, Dr. Johns, probably all administrators here, Mr. O'Hara, Ms. Segwin, who did interviewing probably countless parents and students and others in the buildings and teachers and other members of our staff who are involved in this process. This is a very important appointment for any school and particularly a school like Glenbrook North. And we went with Dr. Georges a couple of years ago for Glenbrook South. So incredibly deep appreciation for this long process and we're very excited about this evening. Dr. Johns.
Thank you, Mr. Doughty, and I appreciate you acknowledging so many people involved in this process. We do very large principal hiring efforts here in the Glenbrooks. This particular effort began a long time ago when we conducted a survey to find out the attributes that people sought in a, in a new principal or our next principal. Then we conducted nearly a dozen listing sessions of all different types of stakeholders to get their feedback. And then created a portrait of a principal and which created the, was the format or the, the basis of where we drew our questions. And then we began the interview process. We started with nearly 30 candidates interested in the position. We brought in eight to be interviewed and that was narrowed down to three. Those three candidates met with large stakeholder groups, three large stakeholder groups at GBN. And we were able to narrow down to two. Then the cabinet members met with each of the two candidates. And then the final group was Mr. O'Hara and Ms. Mullenberg, I'm sorry, Ms. Segwin. I'm just side of the room, apologize. And Ms. Romano and I met with the final two candidates. And after a great deal of deliberation, because we, we really had two tremendous candidates. After a great deal of deliberation, we selected Ms. Amanda Mandy Hughes to be the next principal. Throughout the process, she exhibited her intelligence, thoughtfulness, tremendous self-reflection, a true breadth of experience ranging from classroom to student services to operations to activities, which I think will be very helpful as we, we witness and experience change that will be coming at North as we have a great deal of, of leadership turnover in the horizon. And, and we feel she'd be well positioned to, to bring on new administrators and continue to lead this, this great school well into the future. Really pleased with her ability to, to right away build relationships, to really get to know the school. She has certainly done her homework and we were regularly impressed throughout the process on how well she was adapting. In fact, over the weekend, we touched base with her and she was already deep into the strategic planning work. So we're grateful for that as well. And I think most importantly, and I think on the minds of so many people, is that she's, she's going to make a long-term commitment to the building. She wants to build relationships with all stakeholder groups at GBN and will lead the building well into the future. So if I can introduce Ms. Mandy Hughes, I believe Ms. Hughes, you have a few statements you want to make as well. Everyone, Mandy Hughes.
Good evening. Thank you to the board, the cabinet, the selection committee, and Dr. Johns for this incredible honor and opportunity to serve as the next principal of Glenbrook North. I am thrilled. I can't wait to start meeting our students, our families and our staff. And over the next few months, I'm excited to learn more about North's traditions and the hopes that you all have for our students. I was looking at their strategic plan and some of the things that I noticed specifically were the things that our students are asking for. Support for social, emotional, and mental well-being, post-secondary life skills, voice and choice, communication and relationship building with their, with the faculty at the school. And I'm eager to work alongside our staff teams as we dig into that important work of student belonging and well-being, academic excellence, and post-secondary readiness. On a personal note, I wanted to say thank you to my husband, John, and my daughter Ellie, who are not with me today due to other obligations, but they share in this work with me and I can't do it without their support. So I'm very excited for you all to meet them and thank you for this wonderful and important responsibility and I'm very excited to be a Spartan.
Ms. Hughes, we're very excited to have you here. You've gone through quite the process. We do the things in a deliberate, careful way in this school district. We're proud of that tradition and we're looking forward to welcoming you into our deep tradition of Glenbrook excellence. Before we go too far with congratulations, however, we do have this small thing called a vote. So we're going to do that and I have a pretty good idea how it's going to come out, but I don't want to overdo it. So with, with that, I'll ask Mr. Glawacki to make a motion.
I move that the, sorry, I move that the board approve Ms. Amanda Hughes as the next principal of Glenbrook North High School beginning July 1, 2024.
A second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none?
Mr. Glawacki?
Yes.
Ms. Mullenberg?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hara?
Yes.
Ms. Segwin?
Yes.
Mr. Shine?
Yes.
Dr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Doughty?
Yes. Congratulations. So with that, I think we're moving to the very important part of the evening where we eat.
So we, we have, as you mentioned, Mandy, you'll appreciate this. Aside from having a tradition of long and exhausting interview search processes, we always have marked these moments with treats. So we're going to spend about the next 15, 20 minutes so people can say hello and congratulate you and get to know you further. And then everyone can help themselves to the treats behind me. So should we start now and conclude at 7:40?
Well, we're going to recess. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Recess for food. Let's go. Yes. Recess for food. Let's go. Uh, that was one. It's always just so great to see. So thank you again to everyone who made work so hard on this. Item seven on our agenda, we're back is our consent agenda. Dr. Johns, any changes to our consent agenda?
No, there are no changes since publication of the package.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any questions or observations or thoughts? Hearing none?
Ms. Mullenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hara?
Yes.
Ms. Segwin?
Yes.
Mr. Shine?
Yes.
Dr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Doughty?
Yes.
And Mr. Klowacki?
Yes.
Motion care seven zero.
Item. Let's see, item eight on our agenda is we're back to our discussion action agenda. Part two. I just want to make one observation before we go into this. We have five items. And I want to thank the, really want to thank the administration here. And and all those who work with the administration. I've said this to Dr. Johnson, Dr. Gravel yesterday, the quality of the memorandum that are going to the board, I believe has gone markedly up and that is wonderful to see. It is. The memos are tighter, they're pithier, they're more focused. And that's good for all of us. It forces that diligence, that discipline forces us to think more clearly. It helps us as a board conduct better governance and it's really appreciated. So I know it takes a lot of work to drill down ten pages into two and a half. But it makes, it really, really helps and it helps us do our job better. And ultimately, we can all work together as you work with the schools and our staff and our faculty. So it's really, really deeply appreciated. And that will become particularly important, not just generally, but as we do strategic planning, because these are big amorphous concepts, but they're important concepts. And we'll hear about them in our second agenda item. But our ability to to get things down so we understand it and we have clear paths and we have a bullet point think very thoughtful, but making sure we're very focused is important. So thank you for the hard work on this. Please keep it up. It makes a big difference for us as we do our our work here to be to help go forward with you together. So thank you for that process. With that, we move to item eight point one, which is our report on the dashboards. Dr. Johns?
Thank you, Mr. Doughty. For for many years, the Department of Teaching and Learning or Curriculum Instruction has brought to the board an update on various data points of interest and of note that we've received either internally or also in comparison to what's going on within the state. This is the third year in a row in which we've been more targeted with this report. So instead of blanketing all different forms of data for the board, the the department has been very directed and targeted in sharing key performance data for the district. Data in which the 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 team, the team that supports and works with Ed Services really sees as having large return on on investment or having a large effect size. And so that we narrow our focus to really the big, important areas of operation of learning, the continuation of learning in our district. So this evening, Mr. Ryan Breetag is gonna bring his report and and share some of the high points, but also areas where we're gonna continue to work in the near future. Mr. Breetag?
Thank you. This is, I I joked this afternoon with Dr. Johns that this is, this is like my favorite report to give. So for the rest of you that are looking at thousands of pages of data, no, this just excites me to no end. So honestly, this is, this is great because I get to tell the story. The story of what we're learning and where we're going. So what you have in front of you in terms of this report, I wanna, if you could click the next slide for me. Well, there were no slides given. Oh. Okay. Don't worry about that. We can pivot away from that totally. This is make it even easier. So a few things here. I want to explain how we actually get to this data and what we do. So for our team, we start looking at all the data that we have on a state and national level compared to our whole student population. And we look at that just to get a gauge, how are we doing? Well, once we have the yearly look, we look at trends. Is anything changing? What's happened over the last five to 10 years? From there, we move it down to, we need to understand different demographics. Because it's easy to look just at our wide population, but what happens when we narrow down to different demographics? How are they doing? And then finally, we take a look at that and say, okay, what's actually happening that we can come to understand on a daily basis, a daily lived experience? What's really valuable for us in that front, as you can see, is once we start doing that, we really start to gauge what's the important work that we need to focus on? So what you have in this report is just that. So every year we give you what did we achieve based upon last year's areas of focus? So in other words, we start the memo out with what actions did we take on the data that we pointed out or highlighted from the year before? Then we go into what is the data telling us this year? So a few things, just to give an example, if you go to the next slide. With our chronic absenteeism as an example, and here I noted that this year we had a vast improvement in our chronic absenteeism or a decrease. Where in last year, that was an area of note that we we were concerned. We saw a spike and the trend was going in the wrong direction. So how we walk through that, just for an understanding, is that, one, we take all of our students, we looked and we said, yeah, this is happening across the wide array of student, our student population. Then we narrowed down and said, what's happening within our different demographics, low income, REL population? And we saw with chronic absenteeism, it was occurring across all of our different demographics. So at that point, we said, okay, what else do we know? Let's turn this locally. And that's what's really important here. So we took chronic absenteeism and we started to look using a system you approved last year called Panorama. And we started to compare those that are not showing up to school or are chronically absent. What other implications is that having? We saw social, emotional implications. In particular, supportive relationships and belonging were low. We saw academic implications. So the moment that took place, we moved to the actionables in terms that you see on here. We went and we said, A, we need to do an audit of our attendance process and procedures. We need to develop an MTSS structure and interventions and strategies that we can put in place that can support our students. And we need to focus on a sense of belonging and understand how building a deeper sense of relationships with adults, with their peers, can lead them to actually wanting to be here. Now, why we focused on chronic absenteeism, not only because we saw the results not being where we wanted them to be, but we know it's an early warning indicator of other problems. To take advantage of the resources we have, you need to be here. So this year, we were, the results after putting things in place over the last sixteen months, we saw almost a six percent decrease in chronic absenteeism, which is well ahead of the state drop. So that's a significant marker. We also monitored throughout the year those students that we marked as chronically absent and then looked at their belonging data and looked at what we were seeing. And as they were brought into different experiences and different strategies and interventions that we put in place, we saw their attendance rise. So we targeted not only the whole school, but then we specifically targeted those that had shown signs or actual lived chronic absenteeism. So that's just an example. So you understand the complexity of the data that we look at and how we go about it. Other things inside of here that are just well worth noting. We saw, we looked at our data in terms of our SEL and our sense of belonging has been a targeted area, as all of you know. We we've talked about that now for well over two years. We've seen a growth from that has put us in the ninety ninth percentile nationally with school comparable schools. So that has been a significant increase for us. We still have work to do there. But it has been a significant increase and a lot of targeted work is yielding the results that we wanted. So and cross referencing that, we believe we're gonna see the implications on other areas such as students wanting to be here, academic performance and like stuff. And last, another area of note that's really important is when we look at our college and career readiness data, there's a couple of things there. We're really excited about seeing our ninth graders on track. That's an important marker for us. What's happening when ninth grade year is over? It's a, it's a benchmark for not only success in high school, but success post-high school. Excited about that number and it's correlated to what we're seeing in our national clearinghouse data that's telling us not only are our numbers back to pre-COVID numbers of those going to college, but our our persistence rate remains off the charts. It's well over ninety six percent of our students move on to the second year and that's, that's a huge benchmark for us to model and follow. So we're really proud of that. At the same time, we have a concern that we just don't have access to data on students that the depth of data we want on students that are changing career paths, going to two-year colleges, going to trade schools. We just don't have that rich of data that's allowing us to look at what's happening to those students as they go embark upon what's happening to those students as they go embark upon their journey after us. And having that data, being able to track that data is going to allow us to make better decisions when they're here. So that's an area we really want to, um, increase and find a way to bring that data into this conversation. So a lot of points, but I'll stop there.
Dr. Johns, anything to add?
Well, I, I think this, this more focused, more action oriented approach is really healthy for our district. It enables our key staff members, some that are behind Ryan right now to support and continuous work throughout the whole district. By being able to focus, we're more likely to get the kind of achievements that we've been able to see. So I, I think this is certainly compliment the team for taking this, this type of an approach.
Yeah, that's much appreciated because it's very easy to talk data and use lots of, you know, education power words and so forth, but actually concretely to see change. Uh, and I want to underscore that your sentence, but we have work to do. Uh, you can be 99th percentile and that is marvelous and it should be celebrated, but it's not a stopping point. There's lots of work, lots of ways to support our students as they continue to, uh, do their best with whatever they have, uh, in, in Excel, uh, as, as their world evolves and, and ever more quickly, it seems for all of us. So board members, any questions or comments, Ms. Mullenbeck?
Um, I did want to say that, you know, I thought it was very helpful looking at all the data sources that you looked at to distill it into a memo of this size. I'm sure that was a very heavy lift and I appreciate all the, um, the effort that went into that. I did have a couple of comments, um, coming at this from the perspective of someone who's new to the board. Um, so looking at this dashboard for this year and, you know, having it begin with the action items from last year, that's great. I would have, I think I would have, what I would have liked to seen is then as of the follow-up to that saying, and these are the results that we've seen. And I saw that for the absenteeism and I saw that for some of the SEL. I didn't really see it for the low-income English learner populations, which I know were targeted. And it may be that, you know, again, that, that's, that's a long-term. Those, those initiatives are going to take time to bear fruit. I understand that. But I do think that, um, you know, having a snapshot of last year versus where we are this year is a helpful. Can I say data point? Um, so that would, that would be useful. I, I've just, I felt like navigating through this document is, there's a lot of great information in here, but I felt like I had to kind of pry around to make the connections that I wanted to make between actions and then, you know, the deliverables, I guess.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think that's great feedback that we can definitely add. Um, last year, one piece of feedback was there were so many data points. And forgive me, it was either Pete or Skip who said, you know, is there a way to point out like a top five? And we added that in here. So that's great feedback that we can definitely add as this is something we work on. Throughout the year, uh, data isn't just like a week. So sometimes I think our bus can be a few stops down the path. So we can definitely make that happen. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Here.
Uh, yeah. Hey, uh, Ryan, just, I love the, the presentation, just so I, I get an understanding. The, the last thing you mentioned with, uh, um, the long-term, how our kids are doing. Cause I think that really helps us understand how we're succeeding is, is four, five, eight years out. What are the kids doing? Um, is Panorama going to help you track that? You mentioned getting the data, how?
Yeah, it's a great question. So Panorama is doing an exceptional job of exactly what you were mentioning. What's that data in terms of looking at day-to-day, early warning, seeing where students are and being able to put interventions in place right away. Strategies to support students who are struggling. That's been tremendous. What Panorama doesn't do, it's not a, um, college and career readiness platform. That's the last piece of our puzzle that we're missing is the ability to have that data that says, okay, um, that, that has a four-year curriculum for counseling. Has college and career readiness indicators that we can track when they start as a freshman until they graduate? And then beyond, we don't have that. And Panorama is only as good as the data we can give it. We don't have a system that can feed that data into Panorama. That's what we're missing.
And is there an idea where we're going to get that system?
I do. It's the next agenda.
Eight point two. Nice setup though. Very well done.
Uh, I will give you my extra cupcake afterwards. Thank you for that.
Very well done. Miss Seaman.
Yeah, I have one question. This may, um, I don't know if I recall this correctly. Is this the same, um, report card that gives us the levels of, is it commendable? Is this the same one?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Cause I just, if you could, um, maybe remind me, I think that we had this, we had dropped a level or something because of, can, can you summarize?
Absolutely. So.
Put this into context.
No, that's a, that's a great question. So, um, a few things. So this is a dashboard that's inclusive of the Illinois report card. The Illinois report card is what gives us our summative designation is what they call it. The summative designation, um, changes frequently and how they pull the measures in. But that's how we get it. So Glenbrook North and Glenbrook South were right near the threshold of going from commendable to exemplary. Um, we've noted in here a couple of things, uh, of where that's at. In particular, some areas that we need to really work on that would change that designation. Um, first and foremost, we saw a decrease in our Illinois science assessment. That we, you know, as I talked about these large-scale approaches that we take when we're looking at data, there's also things that we just immediately see and go, wait a minute, that's a red flag. We need to address that. With the Illinois science assessment, that hurt our designation. And in particular, what we found is our testing environment needed to be reviewed. So the educational services team has worked very hard along with building specific teams about ensuring our technology is working. Um, ensuring that we have the right sequence of when the students are taking the exams, that they're in a classroom experience as much as possible versus large areas. When it's possible, that's not always possible in our environments, but those are areas we feel will address that. The second piece, um, that is really important, um, so I'm glad you're bringing it up, is the climate survey. In the past, we've given the five essentials. That has been our climate-based survey. As you can look at in, um, number two, social emotional learning. I mentioned that we gave the comprehensive school climate inventory. That survey was great. The pro, there's a couple of problems that emerged. One, our participation rate on that was low. Um, and I, I know that data was shared last year that that was a concern. That is weighed against our summative. That impacted our ability to reach exemplary. We were, um, in the middle of the state in terms of our participation rate. So that hurt us tremendously. The problem with that is the climate survey is a great instrument, but it's issue, it's five essentials is offered starting basically right now through, for about two and a half months, where the climate survey is a much shorter window of time. So in working with doctors or Mr. Swanson and his teams, they are developing strategies right now to increase that participation rate. And we think that's going to obviously yield, uh, that piece being solved. So those are two of them. The third is more complicated and that is our, our English learner population and the proficiency test. That continues to be an area of focus. As you know, we have made some significant strides and you can look at number one, the learning and environment data. Now it makes sense why you're poking around because I'm moving you all over too. Um, one of the things that we really looked at was we need to start on an educational campaign so that our instructional supervisors, our counselors, our student services departments really understand what our multilingual students are experiencing, what their testing looks like, how that can, uh, how that's impacted, how we move them across their proficiency rates. And that work through Dr. Christine Anderson has been tremendous, um, and well received. So she is doing a tremendous work in that regard. And I think that's going to begin the process of us seeing results. Again, way too early to, to say that, uh, but that's something we are monitoring in Panorama on a, on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, that was really robust, but I really wanted to.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Dr. Steinberg.
Can I be back on your last answer? I, I always, I'm like to always add multilingual to multicultural because it's a different dimension. We have a lot of students here whose parents came to these schools. So basically not only they know what they are coming to, their parents know what they are coming to. We have students that their parents have gone to college. We have students that their parents have gone to college in a different country. We have students that they go to, to, their parents went to high school in a total different system. So it's not just simply a barrier of how well do I speak English or not? I may go home and get a B. My dad and my mom may be very happy because I'm doing okay. In Argentina, you get a C, meaning almost nobody gets a 10 because 10 is reserved for, you know, PhDs, although you are in high school. So the system is different. That's universities have, when you do trans skills, have scales to scale grades depending on the culture of the country. It, it's a science. It's not somebody made it up. So getting the understanding that if I didn't do okay, I should go and talk to a teacher when the teacher is available. And that's okay. That's not a shame. You know, students that know how to do self-advocacy or parents that teach the students to self-advocacy versus our culture that whatever the teacher said as a sign of respect, I take it. If the teacher said, I'm not there yet, I'm not there yet. So I appreciate the language side of it, but there, there's a lot of things where the student may understand, but they may go home and say, okay, this is what it is. What? We have seen it, students who will fight for their grade. I was surprised when I started teaching this day, somebody would get an 89 and would come to my office and say, why is this an 89 and not a 95? And he's like, hey, you're doing great. What's the problem? So there are so many components there that I, I wonder if we are working on that part as well.
Yeah, I think it's a great question and, and I, I want to, to step back just for one second and say, my mention of multilingual learners is because that is a specific exam and a testing point. So that, that's specific to that group. But we do understand the other side of this, that we have tremendous diversity in this district from all shapes, all forms. And there's, there's a lot that we're doing. When you, when we talk about School Links, one of the things that has become very clear to us and School Links is the next topic, is that in order for us to move forward, we have to take our different demographic groups and look at them in a way that helps us understand how are we educating and giving the families and the students the best resources possible? What does a four-year plan process look like for someone that's a first generation to this country? Or maybe first generation considering college? These are different experiences that we need to look at. Students that have families in, of low income that, um, are concerned about self-advocacy. They don't have the resources to self-advocate. We need to get systems in place that allow us to understand that and move forward with working with all of our students. Because as we talked about, it's easy for us to stay at that top level and just go, well, the Glenbrooks, we're doing great. All, from an all-student perspective, we're great. But when we talk about the work that still needs to be done, it's when we start diving into all the different subgroups and demographics and not just the, the, the easy, simple ones that are, that are out there, but really diving into the diversity that we have in this district, which, which is, which is vast. And so we are doing that, um, and we're recognizing we need systems in place to do that. Um, but also I, I would be remiss not to mention that in Panorama, we have set up what are called filters. And again, Panorama is a system that allows us to track students academically, behaviorally, socially, emotionally, and their attendance. And we're constantly looking at who's struggling, who's trending up, who's trending down. We have put filters in place directly connected to some of the things you're talking about. In particular, we noticed, um, transfer students and, and transfer students from, in the United States, transfer students from out of the country. We need to do a better job of tracking and monitoring to support those students and families. So we have put filters in place to do just that. And that's just an example of what you're talking about, but we are very much looking into that.
That's great. To that point, I was going to ask, actually, my first question was, are we tracking? Like when the students go and visit the counselor or a student goes and I know we see a teacher at a time where the teacher is not teaching, are we tracking that as well?
Yeah. So Panorama allows us to track that data. So this is our first year. Now we are rolling those pieces out. There are each counselor, there are different systems set up in place in student services across the district. What we are finding is we need district-wide systems so that we have that data that it's accessible to all of us. Panorama has the ability to track it from an intervention level, um, or a strategy level. And now we need the regular visits that are tied to college and career readiness. We need to be able to pull that together.
All right. My last point, it's, I think it takes a village. So that point is not to you. But I think this is a great job that shows that education is day-to-day.
Yeah.
Right? It's day-to-day, but we are fighting against a dynamic that we are measured based on two points a year, which is the exams, which makes no sense. In the day where we track everything that we do, everything, you are divided, it tracks everything, but your standard is a two-day thing. And I said, it's not for you. It takes a whole village, but to change the culture of, maybe you did okay on your exam, but there's no way back to belonging, back to being in class. There is no way that's the metric that marks. Because if you've been skipping classes or you haven't been doing well during four weeks in a row, maybe you pull it off for whatever reason. But in the long run, we need you to do well every single day. And, and, and that sometimes goes against what, you know, we just seen it with the pressure of finals and everything. Is there anything that we can learn from the data? That we can, can translate? So we all can see how this is a continuum effort and not an effort where if you woke up on the wrong side of bed the day of the final, that means you are not good at X.
Yeah, I think that's, uh, it, it's interesting. One of the things that we are developing and will start to really find its way is what's called an impact letter. And what it used to be is we would send a letter to, only to families. It was a targeted letter. You miss certain amount of days, um, and it just talked about attendance. And what we've, as a team, we've really evolved towards, and we have a district attendance team and a building attendance team. But it's more than attendance. What this impact letter is, what is your lived experience like in our, in our district? And we're building a, basically a custom dashboard for families. And they'll get that, or we're hoping that that's going to become a quarterly experience that not just a report card with grades or not just an attendance, but here's everything that we're, we're understanding about your child and what we're trying to do and how we want to partner with you. Whether they are perceived to be excelling or perceived to be struggling or really either or.
My, um, last question, as I was coming, in fact, to that dashboard. I always get surprised, maybe because as a kid I, I was oblivious to this thing. I never got nervous of those exams. But if you know you're doing okay, I mean, people don't do it on sports. You've been practicing all week, you get to a game and you start thinking, am I a good soccer player? Or I'm good at basketball player? I've been practicing for three weeks to this. But with exams, not everybody, we're kids that have been getting A's constantly on the semester and the week before the exam. It's like, I'm not sure how I'm going to do. I'm getting nervous. Uh, the constant quest, what can we do from our side to provide dashboard support or whatever? So parents can tell their kids, hey, you should be doing okay. You've been doing okay. Or you've been improving. You started really slow, but look at how much you have moved forward. You shouldn't be that concerned for the exam that is coming. I mean, of course you should study and prepare, but I feel bad that, and I don't like generalization, but as a climate, you feel that there are two weeks of the year where people get very stressed out, where they shouldn't.
Yeah, it, they're great questions and we don't have the answers to those very specific moments. But the one thing we do have, and we're, we're continuing to collect this information, is our students perceived social emotional skills. Talk about grit, resiliency, um, growth-mindedness, their emotional regulation. And we use that to help us understand how are our students doing? And where are, again, early warnings that we need to, um, intervene on? And trends that we're seeing across different subgroups and different populations. So you can see that data in here. Um, that's important to us for those exact reasons. Those moments in time are always going to be there. But what are we seeing across our students and our, uh, different groups of students? Holistically helps educate the parents and that's hopefully what those impact letters start to do.
Thank you.
Yep. Mrs. Shane.
Can you, um, share your vision of how this data and these processes will help say the average classroom teacher, you know, where, where they would touch it? Uh, or information might come to them about their class and the students that they are, are working with. Thank you.
Uh, I love that question. Um, if you go, if you look at number two, I think that's probably the most important, the social emotional learning and wellbeing. We have rolled out Panorama to all staff at this point. So every department has gone through at least an initial professional development. So every department has gone through at least an initial professional development session. And their feedback has been my ability to have access to understand the holistic view of a student, groups of students is empowering me to be part of their success. Those are almost verbatim quotes from teachers talking about they just now have at their fingertips, things that they've never had before. Their ability to really understand what the students experiencing across the school and support them from that. The next phase of that is to develop the strategies that they can have. So you can see at both buildings, there's tremendous amount of work about what we refer to in educational language as tier one strategies or strategies that are available to all students or tier two strategies that are strategies available to targeted groups of students. So now that we have this data in the hands of teachers, counselors, administrators, we can look at tier two, who needs targeted strategies, but what's working in terms of strategies that can be applied to all? Last year, you heard from the student voice group from Glenbrook South who talked about how they use the data. That was teachers, student service members, staff members from around the building who use this data to look at, experience it, and then pull students into a retreat to better understand their voice and then bring back those recommendations from the students to the staff. So it's happening in a lot of walks of life and that's really what we want. Not data to be a siloed conversation, but it to be part of as many conversations as it can be. I don't want to speak for my colleagues behind me too much, but I, I know the one thing we've been most proud of is when you walk into rooms where they're talking about students such as a student support team. You'll see our Panorama data up and you'll see this data available right at their fingertips. And that's what we want versus I'm sitting there going, what do you know? What do you know? And trying to parcel it together, it's there. It's being lived right in front of them. Yep.
Mr. Blacky.
Well, thank you again for taking so much and synthesizing it down into manageable chunks similar to what the tool is designed to do and everything as well to, and highlighting the top five. I had a question, I guess tied to AI and the, you know, you mentioned all these filters as you're describing things and everything. I was curious from the system and other things. And this may be a conversation for another agenda and stuff, but because also there, I know there are concerns with our data and where does that go? But is, are there any AI tools that this tool enabling, because you mentioned filters and stuff? Is it flashing things to consider so that the teachers and staff can focus on the solutions? Hey, we see a red flag here and we're off doing what we should be doing instead of a week. Is this a pair? Is this a pair? Maybe I went down the wrong rabbit hole. I think your mic went out, mate.
All right. You're going to give me the hook on this one, but yeah, built into Panorama, we're really excited to be one of the first districts nationally. That's in an alpha state with them for AI. So the way the AI is working is threefold. The first is at the school level, it's constantly Trent giving us areas that we might not recognize. So we always have had the ability to say what's trending up and what's trending down. But now it's doing smart searches where we can say something such as transfer students, non-EL with absenteeism and social emotional concerns. And all of a sudden it starts spitting out, have you considered, have you thought about this search? This might be a better search. Here's the data on that, but here's a different area to look at. So it's taking our search. We've always been able to do that, but it's then saying you might consider this because we're seeing problems over here. The second side of that is that it's embedded at the student level. So it's the top of every student right now, you can say, AI, tell us your analysis of what you're seeing. And AI spits out an analysis of the top three things, positive and top three things of opportunities. If there's a concern that needs to be addressed immediately, academics, things of that nature, we're already aware of that. It's the hidden stuff that we're not possibly seeing a connection that AI is jumping in. And then the third piece that they're piloting with us, which we're really excited about is in the SEL benchmark survey, it's now going to run its own analysis for us of the data based upon if we put in open-ended questions and tell us these students, you should prioritize seeing immediately. These students, you might see positivity over here, but this one particular question is connected to what we're seeing in their other data. You want to talk to them and it's giving us priority list of things we quite possibly could miss. So it's, it's really exciting to see how that's building. It's early, it's in its infancy, but we're excited to be part of that process.
Well, thank you for the lovely report and all the details and everything around. It's so exciting to see all this coming together. You know, we're just thinking about, you know, here's the check for the system, but it's actually being put to practical use. So appreciate that.
So thank you, Mr. Bretake. I really appreciate all the work and everyone else here who's joined us this evening. All the work being done in the buildings and at the administrative level. We really, really appreciate all of that effort. We'll move to item eight point two, which was already noted, the school link system to help with college and career readiness. Dr. Jones.
Thank you. As, as you pointed out, the, the need case for school links that Mr. Bretake is going to walk us through has already been discussed at this meeting, but it's also the, the work of the Ed Services team that's been working very diligently on ways that we can meet our state expectations on a couple of different areas that have burdened in the last two years, three years. And more importantly, support our work in college and career planning for our students. And, and here's another topic, this being school links, that will really have, I think, an improvement on the people, an improved tool for the people who meet on a regular basis with our students and help guide them towards their futures after high school. You ready, Mr. Bretake?
Yes. Okay. So as we've talked about in terms of what's happening with, with our system, one of the pieces we really noted in the dashboard was that we were lacking a system that was unified district-wide when it came to college and career readiness. From a four-year planning counseling curriculum that we can customize to different groups of students through, how do we know that they're on track? What path are they thinking about? How are we getting them prepped for that path? What's that looking like sophomore year? How many, what percentages of students stay on that track? All the way through what's going on when they leave us? Where, where are they going? How are they getting there? So we talked about in the dashboard, the need for a system to collect, monitor and track our college and career readiness. But we also talked about that in order for this to be successful, we need this resource accessible to our families and our students in a, in a very robust and rich way, one central spot to go. So what you'll see here is we have a couple of systems that are really important to us. First, there is a four-year curriculum. So inside school links, it allows us to build out a district-wide, four-year college and career readiness framework and curriculum. It'll allow us to do career development, what their goals are, what their initiatives are, where they're thinking about, and then monitor that as they do different curriculum from ninth grade through their senior year. The, the phenomenal part about this is when we got together with a group of student services counselors and ISs. They were ecstatic. We started this process last year. This year, when we had every counselor invited, every IS invited, this room was packed a hundred percent at the end. And an anonymous survey said, this is what we're missing. And a large part had to do with this, this ability to develop this custom curriculum that could be contributed by student services and our departments in a way that's unique to students from our different demographics, but also within our full-blown school-wide, district-wide student population. So this is one aspect, just one aspect that allows us to unify as a district in school links. The second is it simplifies the experience. One of the things that we're learning as we talk to students, as we look at our data is that different populations have different lived experiences when it comes to selecting courses, understanding their courses. So this would develop a robust online course planner that actually walks families and students through the process. Doesn't take away their ability to meet with counselors. That's going to happen. But their ability to do this all online and see their progress, understand how it's connected to their identified ambitions post-high school, how they're tracking, trending, how they're, how they're getting closer to their goals. This would put us in that kind of position where we're educating our families through our processes versus a paper document and then there, that what happened, where did it go? Did it get lost in the shuffle? No, we're actually able to watch and track that. The other piece is it allows us to understand how different recommendations for courses matter. So one of the things we talked about in the dashboard last year and this year was the low income and a potential achievement gap. Our struggle is to understand a lot about how our placement versus student course selection and what, and then track those students. Hey, you chose this. We recommended that. What's happening? Maybe we can move you, adjust you. Having a system like this allows us to really target our thinking to really start to understand the, the nuances behind the challenges of closing an achievement gap. Last, or not last, one more. We have college and career readiness. The state's asking us to report this live data. That's okay. That's great. But as we talked about, we're struggling to really understand this data from what's, what we have, because right now our data can be anywhere from spreadsheets to pieces of paper. It can be different by GBS versus GBN's counseling department versus the academic departments. To have one system where everybody's pulling their data and housing that data is going to allow us to not only fulfill our state requirement, but more importantly, allow us to monitor the growth in these indicators that we find extremely valuable in terms of how prepared are we getting students for college and career? We're pretty strong at getting data in college, but that second part, we're not always the best at. This would allows, allow us to close that gap. And this is exciting. We're really hopeful. This, again, to be honest, is, is down the road, but it is something that there's equal excitement about, which is how do we take our dual credit, our, our advanced placement work and say, how do we track that? How do we really know what's available? This system, we're excited to begin deepening the work, would allow us to analyze, hey, this class or this sequence of classes is ready for an endorsement, is ready for a certification, is ready for dual credit. You simply have to do this. So this, while not AI, is an auditing system for us that allows us to look at where we're going and what we would need to fulfill those. But also then track how our students are doing with internship certification and other work-based learning experiences. Right now, again, I couldn't guarantee accuracy on that data because it'd be coming from a variety of sources and in a variety of different collection methods. So this is all school links. The larger story behind this is it's a, it's a system called school links that builds it all into one bundle around college and career readiness. There's a lot more, but this is specific to the things we talked about that we've identified as needs and areas for growth that we want to put our time and energy into. And I think it's, it's been conversations we've had as well, in particular about advancing our dual credit, understanding where those pieces are, knowing what's happening to all of our students, not just those that are going to college. And I think this is, we're proposing this moving forward as that next step in our systems that can help support that work.
Thank you, Mr. Bretake. Dr. Jones, anything you want to add?
There's a lot of excitement about school links. It's been in place in a couple of the, or most of the districts around us for a couple of years. So we have the opportunity to learn from their wisdom. I think also it's, it's, I don't want to quite say it's value price, but it's priced at a reasonable level. And we could foresee a savings because our existing system is less capable and more expensive. So this is something moving forward that I, I think will have a real return on, on its dollar for our students right away. But I also think it empowers the staff who work with the kids on their career choices and their pathways to enable them to be more successful and effective.
So thank you again. Board members, Mr. Shain.
What's our current system?
Current system is Naviance. We've been using it for about twenty, twenty years.
Twenty years.
Does this in any way connect with?
Panorama?
Panorama.
Yes. So we'll, it's, it's another data source that we will feed between. This is really the triangle we're looking for, our student information system, which is Power School, Panorama, which is our early warning and intervention module. And then last but not least, this is our college and career readiness platform. So our goal is to sync all three together so that data is just spinning between all.
Dr. Timber, any questions?
Yes, thank you. So two things really. I like the idea of, especially what you presented at the end of, of having some sort of tracking of everything the students do or can do. And back to my colleague comment on the previous item in terms of using AI or even without using AI. Sometimes students may be doing well in certain topics and they don't realize that they are good at that, right? I, I, I want to be a doctor or whatever. And it happens. I'm really good at art or something else I never thought about. But after three years or two years, I've been taking these classes and doing really well on these classes. Maybe I ought to know that, hey, maybe you have other possibilities of doing it. You know, you know, statistics, fifty percent of the students go to college and change major during the first two years. And I think there's another forty percent that changed major more than once. So it may be those self-fulfilling prophecies that I started high school and I thought I want to be an architect because whatever my uncle was an architect. And then when I went to, and I didn't realize I was acing all my social science courses and I could be a lawyer or something else. So can we use data from these, not to fight, but just to add more information to career path?
Absolutely. So the four-year curriculum process is really the heart and soul of what you're talking about. But there's another piece to it. Students receive lifetime access to this system. So first year, we're identifying our interest, doing an interest inventory, looking at that. Second year, we're starting to look at how do we apply that interest? Now, what's amazing is we have a four-year data set on a student. This is what you're thinking. This is what your post-secondary expectations are. We now have access to contact them. They become part of an alumni network inside of here that we can contact and get real data on, hey, did we, did you fulfill that? We can actually control that data much deeper. We can say you selected at, as your exit that you were going to under this major. Did you fulfill that? Did you change major? Now we can start to get real data versus what often becomes the national data. Then we wonder, is that us? Is that real? And how do we improve a four-year curriculum if we're using data that's not really ours?
That's great.
Yep.
That's good. My last one is helping one student at a time. Can we leverage this data? So you know, get to junior year, I have to start thinking about college applications or if I want to go to college or community college. But we have, with this data, we have a tool that can tell yourself or your parents or everybody, hey, this is how you've been doing. This is how your profile looks like. This kind of like starts writing your college essay before you even start thinking about it. Can we use that or is there a way to work with them so they can learn from what they have been doing and make it a bit easier?
Absolutely. And my son's this high school district, he is using this and the conversations are vastly different with him and how it's been, how you educate, how I'm able to ask him questions about how, are you on track? And he pulls it up and he's looking and he's like, yeah, it's telling me I'm on track for what I'm trying to do. Here's where I'm at. So he's a sophomore already. The ownership level there is tremendous, but the ability for the conversation because of the curriculum and how it walks the students through, there's a real student agency that helps them then educate their parents. Now, don't get me wrong. There's a parent side of this, parents would have access to, and they would learn and I secretly have. But it was nice to know my son, I didn't really need to. He educated me. So I'm really excited about that individualized experience and the ability for it to guide students and tell them, hey, based upon the work you did your freshman sophomore year. And the ability for it to guide students and tell them, hey, based upon the work you did your freshman sophomore year. Both academically, socially, emotionally through your panorama data, but also what you identified in your PACE framework. You're you're kind of shifting your thinking. Is that is that what you want to do? That's tremendous that we can start to offer that kind of experience.
That's good. Thank you.
So what's the timing around purchasing something like this?
I figured you'd be happy. I uh.
I'm liking everything I hear. Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. So um, we we have gone through our internal process and have validated it with the stakeholders that need to. They are extremely happy. We have validated it with a handful of students. I wanted to make sure that the experience that they would have. Um, so we're really at the table with you. And should we go forward with this recommendation, we will begin implementation starting in February. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, people are saying, can we start yesterday? So uh, similar to panorama, uh, I I think we we have another platform that is really. That that another linchpin for us.
Yeah, in all seriousness, I had a chance to talk to Dr. Gavell about this just before the the meeting and just talking with all about all of the different features of this. Um, including the the readiness aspect and that the parents and the students can both access it in a very uh, practical way. Um, is great. So thanks.
I I have my notes from you from last year's dashboard, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Melnick.
Um, well, I just, I guess I would say just from what you've described, this. The functionality versus what's available on Naviance is just leaps and bounds beyond it so much more. And if it's cheaper, I mean, I can't imagine why you wouldn't do it. I do have one question, though, is there is some useful information in Naviance? Historically, going back for many, many years, is that all going to get imported into this somehow? So it's not lost?
Funny you should ask. On Friday, we had a tremendous conversation with their lead engineer. Uh, funny, his grandfather was a football coach at Glemberg North for thirty years. Um, so we have his commitment fully that he uh, that that will not be a problem. Uh, the wonderful thing, as Dr. Johns mentioned. Last year, when we started reviewing this, other districts were were reviewing as well, most of which were on Naviance. They've gone through the process. We've worked both with. School links who's saying we can export it all out, get it put in and you'll have that data. And we confirmed with other districts who said, yeah, we were a little skeptical, but it worked pretty flawlessly. So. Um, we had our bless you, we had our college counselors who are really um, the most. In-depth users of the system right now on that call and they were supportive of what they heard. So we we believe we're going to be just fine there.
Well, I I have to say, um, just having used Naviance a lot over the past couple of years, getting my kids off to college. I was frustrated with it a lot and found it didn't really do a whole lot. There were just a few things it could do, and this is like a whole, you know, panel plea of options. Um, and so I think it sounds like a great, a great change.
Thank you, Mr. O'Hara.
Yeah, I think you know, my opinion, I'm I'm on board with this. I guess one of the things.
I have your notes as well.
Yeah, it is a, so after they leave, the student would be maintaining it themselves then sort of like a, almost like a LinkedIn back. And so we'd be kind of hoping that they'd, and so you'd be training the new students to be doing this. Absolutely. So when they would graduate as a senior, essentially similar to what we do with their with their Google folder. Um, we would give them the access rights and we would change it over to a personal email account. And then we wouldn't have at that point come that that chain or that link between us to connect with them. But also, um, what we've heard from other districts that have been using this for a few years. Is that it builds not only a link for the district to speak to graduates. But our current students can use them. Um, you can set up in the portals for you went to University of Michigan. Um, you went to this trade school. Um, can you, people can put in questions and our own student pop, uh, graduates can answer back. So and and so you, they do track, we get to track the data, like how many people stayed on, how many people set up the account. Um, but that data lives, even if they don't set up the account, we it still lives in that system. So should they call in three years or five years, um, we would get get that access. The piece that I think, well, we've been told and one of the the reasons why there's a success rate of kids getting on there is. They have immediate access to an unofficial transcript anytime they want. So that's that's a big feature set that we've heard from our students and our and our grads. So that's in built into the system. So when they leave, there's an unofficial transcript sitting there for them anytime they want. Okay. And do we need any extra labor to uh, maintain this long term? I mean, it's, it sounds like you're going to get. Hopefully we get, you know, several thousand students a year just coming through and it. Um, but it's going to build up over the next ten years fairly quick. Yeah, at this point, the the answer is no. Um, but I think it's part of larger conversations about what are we seeing? What are we experiencing? We don't have the the data enough to really answer that. But in terms of the technological side of the house, no, this this is all maintained by school links. Even the support, um, I should mention that from eight to four P or eight to five PM Central Time. There's someone available for students, parents or staff, should they want to ask questions. And we technically own the data still, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Glaggy.
Oh, thank you. This sounds like a wonderful system and a done number of needed updates and stuff to the process that. Will make it uh, easier to that trifecta you were talking about. Uh, on the implementation, you you mentioned, yes, we want to sign this yesterday and go. But when do you actually now envision it based on training, professional development that counselors enter? That we actually start utilizing the system fully and Naviant is, we say, is this a summer project? And then beginning of next year or sooner?
It's a great question from the standpoint of as we showed there, we just displayed four modules. There is roughly fourteen inside of here. We would be, we would begin in February. So. Um, the first thing I showed was how it can build out a four-year curriculum. The state is requiring us to build out what's known as the PACE framework. I'll save you the word soup. There's plenty of acronyms going on these days. Um, but that is something we're in the process of building. The part that Dr. Cummings and myself really want to do is we want to build that with our counselors in school links. It's just an efficiency piece. So that would begin immediately. Our career and college counselors want to begin the transition of pulling their Naviance and getting kids doing their applications right inside of there. So um, we're in the process of building out our curriculum guide, a district-wide curriculum guide. We hope to by March, having that piece built out and unified in there so that. Next year, starting in August, our students are on, our parents are on, and we're educating them that way. So it would be, in short, from February through the summer, different modules would roll out. So we're ready fully in August.
So August is the target. Okay.
It for everything.
For everything. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, and then I guess, Dr. Johns, based on your comment, you mentioned the number of schools around us are using the system and everything. What lessons learned from them if they were to do it in hindsight at this stage, should we be mindful of?
I've not heard of any detractions or any issues. In fact, when it was brought up in meetings I was at, people are saying. Oh, we in particular, uh, it was in Oakton meetings was with some of our area schools and they kept saying, well, just throw that into school links. That should be in school links. And at the times, this is two years ago, I didn't know what school links was. Uh, so I mean, it's become part of their kind of day-to-day existence. Uh, I've not heard of any concerns.
I meant in terms of the implement, to clarify with you, if they could have gone back, made things simpler.
Yeah.
Any lessons learned there or is that something we can ask them?
At a superintendent level, I know that Ryan's done that work with kind of his job alike across the other districts.
Yeah, the the number one thing we were told is um, by school links and school districts that. A lot of schools try to implement this starting in June. Versus starting with your normal systems and structures. So we are wrapping up our our registration process. We're going into staffing. We we need to start the system now and get it tied to those different initiatives going through. Because then the modules are being built in real time with the work that's coming. That's been the number one thing we we've been told is um, while they can get it up and running in less than thirty days. The more thoughtful approach is to be about six to seven months away from the start of another school year.
Okay.
Thank you. Can I follow up to my question? Are we going to maintain both at the same time? So the students who are.
Correct. Naviance through this year, um, and to ensure that the import, everything is correct. Um, and then we're talking about a potential hold of a backup that would allow for um. Dr. Boyle and Dr. Clausen to have access to uh, information should a student call and need access.
I I think that's wise and and thank you for the leadership on this and the thinking of. And I want to just underscore Mr. Colacki's point, the the training, it's great to hear the buy-in at a hundred percent, the way you portray it. Uh, but this takes a commitment that's more than time to be trained on a system. It's a commitment to a different way of doing things. Um, and it will take some people, all of us take time to adjust to change. It's it's a human characteristic, but. Uh, done right, this could be a very powerful transformational change uh, for our students. Uh, and but at the same time, we don't want to lose the human element so that it'd be easy at home. With, you know, mom and dad or whatever to work on on the system yourself, which is fine. There's nothing wrong with that. But I think we want to make sure they continue to build relationships with our counselors. Because those personal relationships can be useful across their high school careers in many ways beyond this. Um, so this should be an enhancement, but that full buy-in you've mentioned is so important that we want to make sure that everybody's on board and they're. It's almost, it is a cultural change. I don't know enough about it to say more than that, but it clearly is a change that's important. So. Um, the training, while you want to get up to speed in February and get up running and throwing, you know, getting modules moving. Uh, at the same time, I would just encourage speed, but do it with all the thoughtfulness that you've taken here. Don't lose that in the in the desire to get up and running, which I'm not suggesting you are, but just want to encourage. That training that can be repaired will help, you can't guarantee success, will help ensure that it's done about as successfully as possible. So I assume you'll do it in a measured way, uh, as you do everything, uh, Mr. Butey, but just, uh, I want to underscore how important that is.
I really appreciate those thoughts. Be, that's in part why we want to start early. Um, for instance, I I'm just going to go with the 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 curriculum one since we were on that. That module won't be built out by Dr. Cummings and myself. Um, we have committed that. Um, our counselors, uh, this was a packed room of all of our counselors, all of our ISs that then. In order for them to give a hundred percent commitment. If they said they really think we should move forward, they were committing to coming together. This is the team that's going to implement this. So um, I do believe we have that commitment, but I really appreciate. The the confidence to stay true to being thoughtful and measured. So when this is fully up there and working, it's it's actually fulfilling what we're trying to achieve. Otherwise, we got another system that's.
No, it is a very rich vision and I know you, how much you want to realize that it's worth the resources and the time to do it. So speaking of that, this comes back on the twelfth for us to vote. Is that how this works?
That's correct. So if if any other feedback comes in, uh, we'll take tonight's conversation and anything else that comes in, we'll bring it back to consent at our next board meeting.
Excellent. Thank you again, Mr. Butey and everyone else working on this. Item eight point three on our agenda is a strategic planning update. Um, we've had a very thorough uh, report put together by, I think it's CISO, um, and I know Ms. Smith, you've been working with them. Um, but uh, Dr. Johns, you might introduce where we are in this and and again, the the reports, if the reports is is really. You know, superb at this level for interim.
Uh, thank you. And I'll, uh, just real quickly, we had a variety of ways of stakeholders, uh, opportunities to engage. Uh, we did surveys. We also had a large number of engagement conversations. Uh, some of them were quite fun. As we we shared different thoughts about where our district should be down the road. And so we're at the point where CISO has collected all the feedback that they've collected. Uh, from all these different uh, venues and opportunities. And Carol's going to walk us through some of the high points of what they've they've found so far.
Okay.
We're very much in the interim process.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Johns. I want to jump right in. I know that the report was um, very long and that you got it on Friday afternoon, but I hope that it provided you with some. Really good information about what the engagement sessions uncovered from all of our stakeholder groups. Um, I just want to talk a little bit about the engagement formats. As you know, we did a survey and a thought exchange that was launched in the fall. It was open from November eighth through November seventeenth. After that, we engaged in focus groups and those focus groups were with students, families, staff members. Um, we and some alumni. We had open input sessions during lunch period. So this was a really, really interesting. We had a large sticky wall and the students had the ability to just write on paper. We asked them the question. Um, you know, what is it that you need from yourself and from the adults in the building in order to be successful? And um, I had snacks. So um, after they gave me their input, they got um, cookies or chips or whatever they, whatever they chose.
Sort of goldfashion bribery. Well done.
It was absolutely.
It always works.
And 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 when the Oreos were gone, that was, that was a problem.
Clammed up, right?
Muddled through. Um, also the interviews with um, each one of the board members and consensus workshops. And those consensus workshops where we had two of those um, in the with with adults, one at each um, high school. And we also had two of them with students. The participants, like I said, were students, employees, families, alumni, Board of Education and community members. The focus question, what do District two twenty-five students need to be prepared and hopeful for their futures? And this was really thematic throughout the engagement sessions. We wanted people to think aspirationally. We are creating a three-to-five-year strategic plan. What is it that students really need in order to be successful? So the common themes, and it's, it was very interesting as I was listening to Mr. Butey talk tonight. I was thinking about all of these themes that we had and what people were saying and how it ties into panorama. It's now tying into other things that we're doing in the district. So I, as as somebody who has been part of this process. I didn't really feel like I saw, like there were a lot of surprises. And the good news from what I saw with the common themes was this was universal. So it wasn't just chunked out with parents or chunked out with students. It was really universal. The first thing was life skills. And we heard this not only from students who said, I really need to learn how to cook so that I can take care of myself later in life. We heard from families, students need some budgeting, they need some finance questions. I think we've, we've heard this here. Um, Sir, Dr. Steinberg has said that all the time. Students need to learn how to budget. They need to learn how to take care of themselves. Um, mental health, and we have been talking about this since I arrived here. Where we need strong mental health support. Um, there were a lot of opinions on what that looked like. Um, but there was a theme of mental health support. Relationships, all engagement participants um, identified the importance of relationships and collaboration. Not only between students and teachers, but also between teachers and families and the district and the community as a whole. And the college and career counseling, this is, this was um, something that. As I was listening, like I said, to Mr. Butey, I was thinking about what does that look like? Not only for college, but for our students who are going directly into the workforce. How can we help them with their career pathways? And we heard those themes, not only from our families, not only from our community that is clamoring for a workforce. That is ready to show up and ready to work hard, but our students were saying, what if I decide that I don't want to? Want to go to college? How can the district help me with that path? And the growth mindset, where we're talking about individual student growth, expansion of instructional delivery. Or enhancement of family engagement, which is what we're doing here. Um, the participants stress the need to not rest on the laurels and history of District two twenty-five. Um, but there's a great interest in continuous improvement. So there were some additional findings as um, in addition to those common themes. That both of the the students and the families said that we have strong academic experiences in District two twenty-five. That was across the board, really. They also talked about having this unified vision. They feel welcome. There's value in the individual contributions from the students in District two twenty-five. There's a strong commitment to learning throughout the district with not only the staff members, but also with the students. And the parents are really engaged in that learning process. There's a shared passion for the high-quality learning experiences for all students, not just our students who are college-bound, for all students at all levels. And the theme that really came through was that students come first and they are at the center of all that we do. And actually, um, Mr. O'Hara and I were just talking about that during during the um, reception where. He indicated that he was very happy that we're talking about students and we're talking about students first as we're moving into all of these different initiatives. Um, the planning focus, this planning focus is going to um, focus on the future and determine those next steps. Take this plan is going to be taking us into. Take this plan is going to be taking us into the next three to five years. But this is also, it's it's a change. So it really requires the district to have a commitment to move beyond what we've had with the status quo. And it may be uncomfortable, but it's really important for us to work this process and move ahead. So the next steps, I am putting together the core planning team. I've had a lot of people who participated in the focus groups and the listening sessions that have indicated that they want to be part of this core planning team. We're going to be meeting on February fifth and sixth. It is long days. It's two eight hour days where we're going to be diving into not only this data, but we're going to be looking at the school climate plan and data that we received, the communications audit that we had from twenty nineteen, the communication survey that we did in twenty twenty. So we have a lot of different data points that we're going to be looking at, as well as the goals and initiatives document that we worked on over the last two years. We're going to be diving deeper into that. And then they're going to really do this kind of environmental scan and come up with the themes of where we're going to be going with the strategic plan. Then on February seventh and eighth, that's two half day workshops. We'll have the design team that is really going to be refining those strategic directions, that strategic priority and identify the themes in the language. In March, we're going to be taking that draft strategic plan back out to the community. What did we miss? What do we need to add on here? What didn't you hear that you want to hear about? In April, then we'll we'll take all of that feedback again and we'll refine the plan. In May, we'll do a final presentation here and we're going to be really giving you the refined plan. And we hope that by June, you'll approve that plan and then we can begin working on it for the next school year.
So thank you.
Really quick report on a lot of information.
We're all about distilling. Thank you. No, no, it is, I mentioned, this is for an interim report particularly, it's thorough, but you see themes come out and you've distilled them well. So thank you, Dr. Johns. Want to add anything at this point?
I was really impressed with the document. It's far better than I anticipated that we'd receive at this point. I did think, having sat in on quite a few of the engagement sessions, that it did cop, it did capture much of what we heard in those meetings. I appreciate the breadth, the different ways of engaging students that the organization used. And looking forward, thinking of opportunities the weekend and maybe return. Maybe it would be in March after the community has seen the first cut to to come back to the board before we go into the next step of plan refinement might be a great opportunity. We don't we haven't quite figured out what those next steps would look like yet, but that seems to be a good opportunity that we can take. By then, this document will be cleaned up, narrowed down, more kind of efficient to read and get straight to the point. I think that that would be a good time to bring it back.
Right. I did want to mention, just talk about the engagement as a whole. And with the survey and the thought exchange, we had over twelve hundred people that took that survey and contributed seven hundred thoughts. And in the in the report, you'll see that there they have this thought exchange has a ratings ratio. They said our ratings ratio was a thirty two. Anything above fifteen is really excellent. And what that does is it measures the engagement on a particular topic. So the participants not only shared their own thoughts, but they could tell from that ratings review that they were looking at other people's thoughts and they were rating those other thoughts. So they weren't just going through and putting their own opinions. They were actually really taking the time to look at what other people had put. We had three hundred and eighty seven students that took the survey. We had four hundred and ninety six parents, two hundred and thirty three employees, and we had seventy two participants that were from our feeder districts taking it. So it's really important that we include our feeder districts on this because we have students that are in sixth and seventh grades right now that are going to be coming through our district as part of that. What we know is that several of our feeder districts, thirty four and twenty eight specifically, are also working on strategic planning processes right now. So the so the families are really engaged in that in all of their, in all of those levels. And I think they're they're really hungry for that.
And that continuum of thinking is good, the connection. I I am struck by students first and not resting on our laurels. Those are major themes to me personally. I've uttered in various ways here for years. And I'm glad to see those coming through because we don't, we we, those are two very important parts of of what we can do here. The stakeholder input is terrific. And as Dr. John said, we need to, we want to make sure we work through the board staying informed. We don't want to, something to show up in May. We want to stay informed as we go. We'll find the best way to do that. Because while this is an organic, organic process, which is critical to his success and its robustness, it's ultimately something we're going to end up approving. So we want to make sure we're engaged as we go. So any thoughts or points to segment?
Just one question. Again, thank you for putting this together. Was there anything about the process that you followed so far that you would have changed or done differently?
I I'm wondering if the timing of this was a factor in perhaps not getting people in person as much as we would have liked. I'm thrilled with the fact that we had twelve hundred people that did the survey and the exchange. And I think very often people can do that from the privacy of their own home. They can do it at their own timing. And then they're they're finished with it. And that provided us with some great data. The consensus workshops that we had with families were fantastic, but the the we didn't have as large of a participation as I would want. And it was in that November, December area. So I'm wondering if it was earlier in the fall, if perhaps we might have had some better response.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, can you go to the previous slide? Yeah, thank you. I'm I'm gonna go back to what Mr. Dowdich just said. It seems like there's great momentum here and and we we get twelve hundred people participated. And somewhere in May, we're gonna get the final product. So communication and keeping the engagement. So I I having I, you're putting a composition of the two groups for the next step, making sure that people are on those groups. You know, they feel that they are part of a larger thing. They represent other people as well and making sure that we don't miss anybody who whatever way he or she was engaged, wants to be part of this while keeping the size, meaning it's impossible to work with two large groups, but not to lose that momentum, just to make, you know, at the end of the day, it's something that has created organic with the participation of the entire community. We don't want to get to May and and somebody wake up and say, what, what is this whole thing? Or why wasn't, what, wasn't I invited to do? You invited everybody, but that's keeping it that way in terms of people feeling that they have a say on this. And even if they are not part of this twenty five, thirty five or fifteen and twenty, they have a reference. I can call somebody. Hey, I know you are part of this group. Here's my two cents.
Well, I think you could, this is a really great point. Or you've had your, you've said something, you participated in the thought exchange, but you know, you you're not part of this particular group. It's maybe something that can be reported from time to time, even in those weekly updates we get out on Sunday evening. It's a little you know, it could be a three sentence blur, but it reminds people the process is ongoing, how much we appreciate the input we have. And and the groups are working on this and they can always contact somebody. I'm not dictating, but it's a way to, I think, achieve your point. You don't want to lose the overall momentum that's been built.
Our plan is to send this report out in the weekly update on Sunday. And actually, Mr. Olson and I are working on a webpage, a strategic planning webpage where we can put all of this information. We can put our next steps so that people can access it, so that we're really transparent.
They need to get a surprise in there.
Carol, what's your level of of comfort with, maybe that's not quite the right word, but like staff engagement with this process and the feedback we're getting that will then inform on this strategic plan? So you have, you know, your your teachers and support staff and you know, others. And so so where are they? And you know, are you are you feeling good about that? Do we have enough input, you know, et cetera? Thank you.
I have been working with the leadership of our unions to ensure that we're getting some the feedback that we need. I really appreciate that the staff members who were able to come to the consensus workshops and also the focus groups that provided us with some really good insights. I was not at those staff focus groups and the entire purpose of that was to ensure that the staff members felt comfortable speaking to the consultants and speaking openly. I do have a really good cross section of staff members who are going to be participating in the core planning team from support staff to teachers to administrators, security, to make sure that we are having all of those employee groups represented.
Ms. Malbuk.
I thought this, it's it's a great document. There's so much in here. I did have a few things. I, it was interesting to me that you mentioned in response to Michelle's question about the engagement from families and communities in the focus groups and perhaps the timing affected that. How did we solicit participation in those groups?
We we put things on, we sent in emails, we did weekly updates, we put it on social media. We made sure that all the communication channels that we have, that we kind of flooded those communication channels with opportunities for families.
Okay.
And there were, there were reminders too. So when people did, what Thought Exchange does is it sends out reminders if the, if if people haven't completed the survey, asking them to do it. And we gave them enough window of an opportunity so that it wasn't the surveys going out on Friday and it has to be done on Monday.
Sure, sure. And I I could understand how with families, you know, we obviously have contact and information for them and they follow our social media accounts and such, but for just general members of the community, how do we? I'm just looking to the next step when we take this back to the community and ask for them to, you know, here's our first cut. What did we miss? What are you going to add? I'd like to make sure that we have, we make every effort to get the highest participation level we can. For you say, you know, not just capturing people who might have participated earlier, but those who may suffer whatever reason. You know, they're snowbirds. They were in Florida, but they're back now. You know, they want to, they want to participate in this process.
We have used, we have used our feeder districts to to get the the parents of the elementary school students. And we have also used our own network. So I and Mr. Swantenson have, we work with groups and Mr. Olson and also my other communications manager, we work with community groups. So it's the the other taxing bodies, so the villages, the park districts. And we ask them to use their communications channels to send out the survey, to ask people to complete that. We also have Mr. Swanson was kind enough to give me the names of people that are on his group. And they're going, we have some, some people that are community members that are going to be participating on the core planning team. But to your point, it it is difficult to get the information to the people that don't have
A contact with the school.
Right. Well, in your mailboxes this week, I hope that you get the Glenn Brooks publication. And what we're planning to do is a large scale article on the strategic planning process that will go in the summer edition of the Glenn Brooks publication. So even if people haven't had an an opportunity to participate in the process, they at least know what the outcome is. And then we can also talk to them about the engagement that we did in relation to that.
I think that sounds like it'll be really successful. Just a couple other points. One, just randomly, because it caught my eye when I was looking at it. And and maybe this has, again, something to do with timing. I thought that it was interesting that the largest word in the thought bubble was winter. Completely not to have anything to do with anything else.
Oh, it might have.
But just looking at everything that's in this report, and there's so much, and I think, you know, the themes are very much like you said, some of them were surprises, but some of them were very much things that we've all heard, you know, that we know are are important to students and families and members of the community. And I just I think that when we get to the process, the point, the next point of really honing in on this, you know, the it's the 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 difficulty is going to be prioritizing, you know, deciding out of this huge laundry list of wants and and wishes and, you know, if we if we could have everything, but we can't, we can only, you know, we have to really figure out where do we get the bang for our buck and what is what's really key to move the district forward. And I'm sure I'm not telling you anything that you haven't already thought about, but that's the first thing that came to mind to me is, wow, there's so much here. We've really got to, you know, get our arms around it and then start figuring out, you know, what are the most important themes here and what.
And one of the beautiful things is that the other resources that we're going to be using will also inform it. And so then we're going to be looking at the themes. What are the themes that we saw in the school climate leadership or survey? What are the themes that we saw in the communication survey and the communications audit and our goals and initiatives? So how can we look at all of that data, not just these pieces, even though this is a lot of information here? And see what the themes have been over the last several years to really find out what those priorities are.
And I'm glad you mentioned that because I do think with all the good work that's been done in the past, you know, we need to make sure we take advantage of that and that 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 gets wrapped in to all this. So good luck with all that. Thank you.
And we'll see you in March, right?
Mr. O'Hara.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for all your hard work on this. Um, I guess one of the things that jumped out at me that was upsetting was the fact that the alumni didn't really respond. And and those are the ones that I feel could really give us some good feedback because four years ago, you graduated from here. What helped, what didn't help if you looked back? And and is there any plans to try to reach? I I saw that they did a bunch of invites and.
That 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 was the group that I tried to reach the most and gave them up many opportunities to participate. When we started in the weekly update by just saying to families like, like you, do you have? Do you have a recent grad who would like to participate in this? And we had about forty people that said that they would participate. Send out, send them out a Google form, said when would be a good time. We gave them a couple of different days, a couple of different times when they could participate. And they they chose those times. We had the, we we sent them the links to the Zoom and there were several where people didn't show up. Reminded them again, asked them again, hey, we've, we're we're putting out some more focus groups. Can you participate this time? Actually, we had one right after college students would come home from for winter break. Hoping that they were sitting around with, looking for something to do, maybe on Zoom. And and we we didn't get the participation that we wanted. The the three students who did participate gave us some really good information. And if you read that part, it was, it was really informative. It was really interesting to me, the kinds of things that they said about what they needed and 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 what they the way that they were prepared, but also things that they wanted other people to know.
Thank you. Mr. Gluckey.
Wonderful work and glad that we're using this for so many things going forward. The engagement was at a great level and sharing what my colleagues have said, whatever we can do from a communication perspective to keep this top of mind. I I don't want to hear in six months from now, oh, I never heard about that from anybody. Well, feel freely to blitz them, you know, put it out there and everything, have a banner ad. They had their
I'm gonna get a sandwich.
Yeah, they had their opportunity to contribute. They were giving them more opportunities to contribute. That's, you know, as they they need to understand there is a process and everything. So I, whatever you can do from a communication strategy to keep that top of mind, signs, things in the hallways, you name it. That's definitely appropriate, I think, in this context.
It was really interesting. Once the students, you know, that had this big, big wall and they'd come in and say, what are you doing? And I'd explain it to them and they would, they would get writing, even even when I ran out of treats, they were still writing because they wanted to make sure that their voices were heard.
But yeah, with the faculty, everyone like, hey, we, here it is. You, it was a chance to be part of, we're now going to help us execute. We're going to need their help on execution.
Absolutely.
And so don't want to hear the kind of like, oh, what, I never said that. No, no, you had a chance. This is what everybody said. Now we need your help. So thank you.
Great. Well, I, we have lots of work ahead. Great work so far. I am, and we'll talk about making us informed, et cetera as we go forward. Ms. Smith, thank you for all your leadership on this. Much appreciated.
Thank you. And we're turning the corner and leaving instructional, academic and strategic and getting ready to start working on our projects this summer. Dr. Gravel and Dr. Patak are going to walk us through some of which we covered just moments ago in the Finance and Facilities Joint Committee.
Yes. So in an effort to maximize our time together, just want to acknowledge that we just had a joint Finance and Facilities Committee meeting that met this evening at six o'clock. The majority of the board was present. And so at this time, I'll just ask Dr. Patak to highlight the top level numbers and then we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, so these are the projects we reviewed with you back in November. Since then, we've had our con, our district architect go create bid specifications and put everything out to bid. So in your packet, table one provides a nice summary of all of the the bids that we received. So it's organized by trade, all of the lowest bidders, and then it's So it's organized by trade, all of the lowest bidders, and then it's spread out among all of the different projects. And so you'll see in your packet, we had, um, you know, significant savings. It's about 18% savings, $761,000. And this is, as we talked about at the facility finance meeting, this is primarily the result of, you know, number one, we had a very competitive bidding process. We received for our roofs, eight bidders for all of our other trade packages. We received on average about five bids per package, which is a really nice competitive process. But the biggest savings is just from the value engineering we did during the design process. We did not impact really the scope of any of our projects. Everything we presented to you is still being done. But we have this, this nice savings, which we summarized in the packet, and we also discussed at the finance facility meeting. So I am happy to answer any questions anyone might have. Otherwise, there's no action on this tonight. It would be on the consent agenda on February 12th.
So we always love three quarters of a million dollars of savings. And you tend to deliver this kind of news multiple times a year. So you realize you continue to set the bar higher and higher for yourself. So, but well done. My, my, my real question for you though is just to make sure we're within whatever budget we were conceiving for doing these projects. Regardless of the $761,000 of awesome saves. Okay. That's all good. All right. I know, I think all six of you were in the last meeting. Anything you want to add or any other questions you might have, Ms. Smith?
I just had one quick question that I forgot to ask in the last meeting. For, and this may be kind of an odd question, but for the bathrooms that were selected this round, because I know the first ones were kind of the ones that needed the most attention. Is this kind of going in that order as well?
It is. So at Glenn, yes, it is. At Glenn Brook North, we're picking, they're all original bathrooms. At Glenn Brook South, we're also addressing the capacity issue at State and Madison. And so we're taking a, a current female male bathroom and we're adding a second bathroom so that we can double the capacity.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Other questions, folks? Others?
I just had a quick question on the bathrooms and everything. I know we were doing this in stages, but are we, everything now staying the same? Or with the, what standards we set with the original models?
Yes, that is the plan.
The original models being the ones that we did last year, not the, the vintage ones. Okay. Terrific. All right. So we will see you back on consent on this on the 12th. Terrific. Okay. That, um, thank you, Dr. Patak. Then that leads us to item eight point five, which regards our phone service and hardware expenditures. And Dr. Gravel, you appear ready, willing and able to discuss.
So again, just recognizing our, our time this evening, I won't get too excited, but I do want to share with the board that the school district has maintained a certain type of, of telephone technology for about the last 15 to 20 years. So you might've heard of the term VoIP. So we've been on a, a digital phone system for quite some time. It's currently a Mitel branded system, which is proprietary in nature. And so that means everything has to be Mitel branded. We can only utilize software from them. And then we subscribe to a variety of other services to get some different tools that we need. The most important tool that we rely upon truthfully, on a day-to-day basis is notifications when 911 is dialed. You know, when we say that, there's a lot of assumptions that schools don't dial 911 often, but in reality, with our size of district and with the unique needs of our students, we tend to have as many as 10 on average, about five 911 phone calls a week. And when a 911 call happens, whether it's from the nurse's office, or whether the athletic trainers or a classroom, a large amount of response team members need to be notified of exactly where to go. They receive those notifications through a variety of, of different tools, whether it be the phone on certain individuals' desks, text messages, notifications on laptop screens. And unfortunately, our current system has proven a bit challenging. I'll use that term. That's another way of saying we have not received consistent notifications during our most critical response time. After going through a large amount of troubleshooting, system enhancements, modifications, we just can't get our legacy system to respond the way it needs to. That led us down a path of exploring other options. And many districts around our area have actually been switching from the traditional digital VoIP system to a cloud-based system where the entire phone system is operated within the cloud, just like any of the other services that we, we candidly are using today. We performed an, a review of a large amount of, of cloud-based systems and we settled on two to do extensive testing with. One was a product called Ring Central, and the second one was a product from the service Zoom that we still use throughout our district. At the end of the day, and I won't articulate everything that's within the memo, we did identify Zoom was the best alternative. One of the uniqueness of the Zoom proposal was that because we already subscribed to Zoom, we actually are able to achieve a cost savings by making this transition because Zoom licenses are included as part of your phone service. So on a year-over-year basis for software licensing and support, we're able to achieve a $19,000 cost savings each year. In addition, we were able to negotiate a zero cost increase year-over-year for that five-year duration. So, so many of our license agreements, we see anywhere from a three to a seven percent annual increase, and we're able to mitigate that down to zero. The only additional cost that we will need to experience, and we were anticipating this, which is why we already built it into the budget, is our physical desk telephones, many of which are 12 to 15 years old, will need to be replaced. The first reason for that is that the Mitel phones we currently have are legacy and they are proprietary. So we can't reprogram their and reprogram them and utilize them with another system. However, the telephones that we are evaluating now for implementation are what we refer to as generic SIP devices, which means if Zoom did not meet our needs in the future and we went to a different platform, we don't have to replace our telephones again, uh, which is really a key element there. The exact number of telephones is still to be evaluated. We have over 1,200 handsets currently in use. They are everywhere. Sometimes there could be three with on, with, or sitting on one desk because our current phones have struggles managing multiple lines and multiple individuals associated with them. So we look forward to reducing that number. Happy to talk about all sorts of testing and everything, but I will defer to the board for any questions.
Dr. Johnson, anything you want to add? On the, so when you, we come back on the 12th, are you asking us to approve the Zoom service and licenses and the replacement will do separately when you get to that point?
Correct. The replacement also has already been built into the technology services budget. So we'll settle or confirm the actual numbers and then see.
Now it'll come back just in the spring or something of that nature. Okay. Do you remember if there's any questions? Dr. Steinberg?
Funny enough, I was at a board meeting for the university last week and we were talking all the same things. So a board member has this question. I said, I have to ask it again.
Yes. UIC just adopted Zoom phone, just as a sidebar.
The university, we used to have phones everywhere.
Yes.
And 90% of people don't use the phones. And now we have a system where the phones ring on our cell phones as well.
Correct.
So as you're thinking about the hardware part of it, are we going to reassess in terms of where, I recognize there are places where phones are needed. If you have a student that will walk into your office, you're not going to give him or her your cell phone to make a call, but are we going to reassess?
Dr. Steinberg, you're going directly down the path that we are preparing to engage in. I wish I could actually run a report right now and show you every single phone number in the district and how many phone calls were made within the last year. Unfortunately, we don't have that reporting capability right now. The new system, we will. But we do have some anecdotal data that we'll be sharing. Yep.
Other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms.
Okay. Again, this may be an odd question, but how does a, a cloud-based phone system work? I understand cellular, I get that. I understand, you know, the hard line phones, you know, the traditional ones we've had for decades. How, how does this work? Like what is it? So if your, if your internet or wifi goes down, does the phone system go down? What?
It does go down, which is the same situation we're in today. So the difference between a cloud-based phone system
Yeah.
and a VoIP system that we would call, uh, really defined as an on-premise system.
Right.
Is that we have the physical brain of the phone system sitting in one of our server racks.
Right.
But if we lose power and the battery support doesn't work, or if we have a fiber cut, we lose phone service. The cloud phone system, the brains and everything live in their data centers. And here's the big difference. In the event that a server goes down, our instance of Zoom phone is replicated off 10, I believe 10 different servers in different parts of the world. So we don't lose any actual service. If our internet goes down, we actually maintain service because we can use a cellular connection, a hotspot or a redundant connection that's separate from our phone systems. So we actually have more stability when the phone system itself is not living within our walls.
Okay. Interesting. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm sorry.
Couple. Can you talk a little about 911 identification?
Absolutely. So there are several different laws that exist that we are obligated to comply with. One of the laws specifically regarding 911 is when a 911 call is made, every physical handset or in the case of making a call from an app on your cell phone actually has to be pre-programmed with a location. Now, when you're calling from a cell phone, it actually chooses or takes your GPS location. When you're calling from a physical handset, we've already identified, for example, that we are in room, oh, my eyes, 105A. So it says GBA dash 105A, Glumbruck High School District Administration Building. And we even say the door, the exterior door that's closest to there. All of that information is transferred to a 911 operator upon making that phone call. And then that information is relayed to the first responders. In the building, when 911 occurs, instantaneously within just a few milliseconds, we have broadcasts that go out. So for example, 911 is dialed, always in phone systems to confirm a dial is legitimate. It takes about a minute, uh, forgive me, it takes a second to register. And then after that happens, every single response team member, their phone gets taken over with a notification that says this is the individual's extension or the, the room number that's been, or that's dialing. And then the description, the same information is provided. The first responder shows up on that screen. Simultaneously, that information can go out through text messages as well as emails. That information is also available through this system on a very large monitor that can be mounted directly in the nurse's office or the main office so that instantly everyone can see. The last thing it does is it will take over the screen of designated computers, such as the computers at our main entryways. Because those individuals are ultimately responsible for relaying it on the radio. But wait, the new system also can support integration with our new Motorola Wave radio system so that when the call is made, a text to speech announcement is made over the radio to indicate that 911 has been called and this is the location to report to.
Okay. So that's what we call a great question.
I told you I was a little excited about this.
So what is a little unclear to me is in the memo, we see the $98,000. And as opposed to the hundred and whatever it was, but the real money here is in the handset.
Correct. We have a handset replacement as well.
That should be highlighted since it's a couple of hundred thousand.
Well, so the reason why we're.
Saying you don't quite know the quantity.
Correct.
But that's the, that's where the money is. And that's what you're asking us to spend. But then you're saying you've already planned this expenditure. So if you were to look back in the budget, there's a line item.
Correct. That's within our non-capital expense. So the, the technology services budget accounted for approximately $500,000 of non-capitalized equipment, one being intended for the handset replacement. The, uh, we identified the per unit cost and the type of phones. But the question is, how many handsets do we truly require? And that's the work that we still want to do before we move forward with approaches.
Yeah. This is, do, is the current thinking that we still need a handset in every classroom?
The current thinking is that we do still require a handset in every physical space, whether it be a classroom, a conference room, or things of that nature. The question that I think we really need to answer is we currently have handsets all throughout open offices, individual instructional assistant desks and so on and so forth, teacher desks. Is that still necessary? Or is that not necessary? Many districts went the route of having phones on everyone's desk when that was the primary form, form of communication. Now that we truly have transitioned much more to email being your default communication or other approaches, how many of those phones candidly are just sitting dormant? Is, is our big question. I wish I could present the specific quantitative data on usage. But that's part of our conversation we'll be having.
So last question, we upgraded the classroom audio systems.
Yes.
And are they bidirectional? So somebody can push it, you can, it's duplex. You can talk, talk and so you, you can, somebody can speak to you, you can speak to them.
Right. Few things. So we have.
Not just a bell.
Well, we have two different types of systems. We upgraded classroom audio systems with respect to the audio coming through computers and things of that nature, or even the speakers we have in here. Then we upgraded building-wide paging systems. However, we have not finished the process of installing any new speakers for the most part, unless something went bad. So it is not bidirectional. It is zone-based paging in the majority of our locations, and it is only for announcement purposes.
So there's.
We rely on the phone in the classroom for two-way communication.
So there's no way like would be typical in elementary where they push the button in the offices. Yes.
No.
Mrs. Jones in 50, room 52.
In fact, um, I want to say about 15 years ago, there was a, which was before my time. There was a, uh, an effort to remove the buttons from all classrooms.
Okay. Anything else over here?
I was just going to say from those, being in a Zoom office, it's pretty seamless. And if you integrate it with all the media and displays, it's actually even very, very slick and easy. Make you focus a lot less on the technology and more on the communication. So in terms of, just to clarify, your, this proposal is just focusing on the software, which was up for renewal and everything.
It's, it's software and service for telephone. This also candidly, the, the transition, a pretty major one from an on-premise phone system to a cloud-based phone system. And then we will bring forth a, a very simple, straightforward memo.
Actual hardware and stuff that was to be separate anyway.
Correct.
Which you were stating that that was scheduled for this year.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the highest capital outlay on, on the handsets, if we replaced every single one as is, would be as, as much as about $225,000. We are hoping for, I won't even put a number. We're hoping for less than that, but it all comes down to the conversations at the voting level.
Thank you.
Terrific. Okay. Uh, thank you very much. Item nine on our agenda is summary of our meeting. We had quite the meeting tonight. Uh, we had the board and superintendent reports. We heard about activities and sports and variety shows and really need extra about a visit to Arga. And I'm sure it's an example of many other fine trips that we, our, our students take to enrich their experience. And also an award on our AP diversity for computer science, which is always good to hear that we continue to think more broadly to encourage and include more and more of our students across our curriculum. We had a dasher reports about efforts we're making in response to data. We had our college and career readiness platforms for school links. We talked about that will come back on consent on the 12th of February, strategic planning update. Uh, we'll continue to hear about that as you go through the spring. We talked about the awards for capital projects, which came in more than three quarters of a million under budget, uh, which is tremendous news. And we just heard about our upgrades in our phone service also coming back in February. We do have a closed session night, which is item 10 to consider collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, the placement of individual students and special education programs and other matters relating to students pursuant to sections to C, two and 10 of the Open Meetings Act.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Let's take five minutes and then we can come back. Don't think it's a super long close. Let's take five minutes and then we can come back. Don't think it's a super long close.